Hello, my name is Miri Knitte-Burlt and I represent the Managing Authority of the Central Baltic Programme. And if you're listening to this recording, I hope you're interested in the future Central Baltic for the period 2021-27. And as you probably know, we are drafting the new programme and we're in the middle of a public hearing. And this video is part of the public hearing. So we will tell you in webinars through this video and online documents what is going on and what are the plans for the future. So I will start sharing a screen. I will show you a presentation which will help you to get to know the new programme. So here we go. The agenda for this video is to first give you a short overview of what the new programme is planned to look like. Then we will also cover some aspects of our strategic environmental assessment. And then finally, we'll tell you a few things about what is going to happen next and how you can participate. So very briefly, if you don't know the Central Baltic very well, here you see a map with our programme area and also some history of the programming process. So it all started with the new regulations having been drafted. There's a proposal from the Commission. And then the mandate was given to the Managing Authority by the Member States participating in this programme to start the work. And the work has been done by a so-called Joint Programming Committee, who takes the formal decisions and a working group working on the content of the programme. In both of these regions from all our countries are well represented and in the JPC also responsible national ministries. We were extremely lucky to have a small possibility for on, not online, but rather live meetings in August and September, where we had the first possibility to present the draft of this programme to you, to stakeholders in each of our countries. So that was the first time when we, on a large scale, involved everyone interested in the region. And this public hearing is the second big effort. So after we got feedback from the thematic workshops from you, the working group and then JPC was able to agree on the main logic of the programme and its intervention logic. And also the draft of the Strategic Environmental Assessment has been drafted. So at this stage, we are in the public hearing. We are wanting to get stakeholder opinions on our content, on our proposals, and then finalize the work. At this stage, we don't know yet what the budget of the programme will be. As comparison, we can say that the budget for this period has been around 120 million. So it's possible it's going to be the same, larger, smaller, but I think the scale is going to be somewhere like that. And then eventually, when we've gathered your feedback and the Member States have given their national approvals, then we will submit the document to the European Commission for approval. On this slide, which I won't go into detail with, you see basically all the work that has been done so far. And you see there's a lot of work. So we have started from the very left-hand side with looking at regional strategies, plans, identifying from those what are the cross-border relevant activities and then working further and further in this logical scheme. And now we have come to the place where we can present a programme draft already for you. This is the draft programme on one slide, but I will go through each of these points. So we basically are dividing the programme into four entities. And each of these four entities has between one to four specific objectives. And we will go through these one by one. For each of the objectives, you will hear me talking about results that we want to achieve. The point is that we have really defined now seven in the end, I had to do a quick math in my head. We have identified seven individual objectives that we want to reach. We have described them in words, but we also foresee a certain result which will be an indicator for each of these objectives. So each project really needs to contribute to that result. So look out for that wording in the slides if you are interested in that topic and think, would the activities that I am wanting to do, would they lead to those results, would they contribute? Then also, you will for each objective see a long list of possible activities. None of them means that you should do all of them. It means that you should, this should be an inspiration to you and you, in your project, need to find the relevant mix of activities for you. And also, you will see possible target groups, possible partners. Again, you have to find the partners that will help you reach those results effectively. But we have given an indicative list of partners that we foresee as possible. And also, basically on each slide, you will also always in the title see "Central Baltic, Central Baltic, Central Baltic", and that is really, although it's repetitive and maybe a bit funny, but it really highlights the point that everything we do in this programme should have the scope, the focus in the Central Baltic level. So we are really wanting to do cross-border cooperation with neighbours from this region. But then let's, let's get to the beef, so to say. The very first priority, if you want to call it so, has been defined as innovative central Baltic business development and it's split into two specific objectives. The first one of those is more exports by central Baltic SMEs. And here really, the idea is that our SME-dominated economy would increase and improve its capacity to take products, to take services to new markets. And when we talk about new markets, we talk about markets outside the EU and EFTA area. But we've also added an element of the possibility to put together efforts and to participate with a joint offer in a bidding for an international organisation. And this, you will find more explained in the text that you will find on our website. So here, we don't limit any economic sector, but all sectors that are interested and have the possibilities and passion to enter new markets can be targeted. What we do want to see is innovative companies being involved here. And innovative in this case has been defined as company that is targeting a higher value added than the sectoral and regional average would be. The result, as I tried to emphasise, is you really need in your project to achieve sales and contracts on new markets. This is what we will be measuring. And the target group here, we foresee to be established mature, innovative SMEs, regardless of the sector, but they have to have international cooperation, experience and capacity to be able to meet this target. And for the potential partners, you see a longer list. The emphasis here is on non-commercial organisations, umbrella organisations, so not SMEs directly, but umbrella organisations that will help the SMEs get the work done. Possible activities you see listed, it can be developing joint offers of products and services, market information, market research, branding, marketing, and then sales support activities to target markets. Is it visiting fairs, doing expert services? You will know best and you can pick from this list and add to it. The second goal is to have more new central Baltic scaled up growth companies. So this is different from the previous one where we targeted mature companies. Here, we want to work with new companies. And we define new as not more than five years from the start of operation. And here, we really want to see companies with an ambition and a potential to grow, to use their potential. And we want to scale up these companies. Scaling up means raising investments, establishing in a presence outside your home market, developing business models, such activities. And when we talk about the potential to grow, we have not defined it ourselves, but again, your partners and the umbrella organisations taking part in the project should be able to define this. So what do we want to see here? We are going to measure the number of new growth companies that were able to scale up thanks to our project. And the target group really is then these new companies. But for the sector, there are no limitations. Potential partners, also non-commercial organisations, so not the SMEs directly. And we have listed some of their characteristics or possible groupings or types of partners. The examples of indicative joint actions are quite similar to what we saw on the previous slide. So product development, marketing, branding, research, but always the focus, even in the research, needs to be on achieving the results. Then we will move on to a completely different topic. So this is our second priority, about improved central Baltic environment and resource use. And here we have three specific objectives which we will again go through one by one. The first one is about circular economy solutions. And here, the goal is to reduce the use of virgin materials, to reduce waste and to increase the reuse of products. And of course, this derives from the challenge that we have related to high levels of waste. We have low levels of product and material reuse and we need to change this. So here, we will be looking at the design of the whole life cycle of products or services. And we think an important part still is going to be awareness raising and changing the behaviour of consumers, but also the producers and service providers. We've looked to the European Commission Circular Economy Action Plan for the key product value chains that we can identify and target. But here, you will see that it's quite a wide scope. The result really that we want to see is improved product or service cycles or chains. So we really again want to find the central Baltic scope either by increasing or reducing scales of circular economy solutions so that they really fit the central Baltic region and its economy and then you get to these solutions implemented. As partners, we see both public and non-profit organisations that are relevant in this work. And the target group is really quite wide. So people, communities, businesses, all can benefit from this. Examples of actions that can be done together, again, awareness raising, very much mapping the cross-border product lives and cycles and chains. This is a new approach really in cross-border cooperation. So certainly, we think mapping is needed and then developing and implementing the method so that really we get to the reduce and increase of reuse. Here, we foresee possibly small-scale investments. That's likely maybe to happen. Moving on, we have as our second objective here to improve central Baltic coastal and marine environment. And as I think we all know, the poor health of the Baltic Sea remains a concern. So we are building on work that has been done in the Central Baltic Programme and in many other funding instruments and to really reduce the inflows of nutrients, hazardous substances, plastics and toxins inflows to the Baltic Sea. We want to focus the programme work by working on actions defined in National Water Management Plans and Marine Strategies so that we keep those as the backbone and basis. And what we really want to achieve is to improve or to reduce the sources of run-offs. Partners can be a wide scale of public, non-profit, possibly also private companies. Please reply to our survey, comment also on these things. Do you think we've identified the right partners? Do we have identified the right target groups and so on? So the word is free in our survey. What activities possibly can be done is designing either new methods, adapting existing methods, piloting together to really see what works in our region, what can be then scaled up. And also here, we foresee small-scale investments. The third priority here is to decrease CO2 emissions by improving intermodal mobility in our region. And this really means that we have issues in our transport system and CO2 emissions are too high. There's a lack of multimodal integration and we don't use enough the innovative and existing or possible solutions that could be. So really, the goal is to achieve joint mobility solutions and to improve intermodal mobility in ways that reduce CO2 emissions. Indeed, I think I already just said what the result is expected. So we do want to see CO2 reductions in our improved intermodal transport nodes and corridors. And here, the potential partners are the organisations or the authorities or even private companies possibly, who are able to get this done, so to speak. And the target group is of course all the people, visitors, businesses, who are using then these improved services. What we think can be done and needs to be done, probably some analyses, surveys, drawings, designs of solutions and other. And then most likely piloting some small-scale investments or building models, apps, technologies that lead to solutions and improved processes. Our third priority with one specific objective is more accessible and inclusive central Baltic labour market. And here, the specific objective is to do joint efforts in the region to strengthen and improve employment opportunities in the labour market. And this comes from a challenge that has been identified that we have less competitive groups in the society who find it harder to access work opportunities and also the labour market is quite inflexible. So we want with our work and our projects to change this to some extent. So we want to strengthen, improve employment opportunities in the region. And here, the scope is quite wide, so it really involves everyone involved. Counterparts of the labour market, all sectors where work opportunities can be found are going to be key in this change. We also want to strengthen entrepreneurship development as a way to increase the employment opportunities. Here actually, because of the wide approach, we have indicated three results, each with a specific entry point. So first, we want to measure the people who have, thanks to projects, increased their competitiveness on the labour market. Then we want to measure how many companies have applied anti-discriminatory policies. And then thirdly, we want to measure how many people have been able to increase their entrepreneurship. And here, the potential partners is a wide variety of organisations with competence, with the mandate to work in the labour market, but also employers, public authorities, NGOs. And we want to target really the less competitive groups in again quite a wide sense and the companies who will be employing people. Indicative actions can be trainings, incentives, providing services for employers, doing networking to get those ideas, simulations, maybe some problem-solving exercises and also mobility of the participants. And then finally, we are going to the last priority with one specific objective about improved public services and solutions for our central Baltic citizens. And here, we again see that working in a cross-border context, we have challenges, we have obstacles related to administrative, regulatory, different languages, different cultures coexisting and these are hindering the effective cooperation in public administration and public services. So in this priority, we actually encourage all branches, all levels of public administration, all public services and solutions to be considered. So this is not limited to a specific field of activity. The only thing we have said actually is that you cannot include joint curricular development within educational systems, but otherwise, this is a very broad, broad objective allowing really for identifying those public services and solutions for which there is a need. And the results should be really new practical solutions and improvements to public services either without digitalisation or in digital form. And the target group really is going to be the people who are benefiting from these services across our region. And here, we see as potential partners, public sector organisations on all levels. Possible actions, trainings, feasibility studies, participatory processes and developing those, creating really these services together, improving public services, public solutions together. And then this aspect of digitalisation really as something we wanted to highlight for the future. That was what I wanted to say about the programme as such. Please go in on our website, read the programme document draft. It will give you more information. And then after that, please fill in the online survey and give your response on all your thoughts that you had when listening to me or my colleagues or when reading the draft. Tell us what we got right, what should be improved, what we should consider. But then we will also look at the so-called Strategic Environmental Assessment, which is a way to really integrate environmental and sustainability aspects into planning and decision-making. So we have carried out an assessment of the programme to see whether there are potential and significant environmental risks coming from the activities that we have planned. And the evaluators are also looking at recommendations to mitigate possible risks. This is maybe the most important picture of the assessment and it shows that all the activities that we have so far planned are either with a positive impact or with a limited risk for negative impact, but none would have really a negative impact. So this is of course very important and a positive message for us and what we expected really, what we were aiming for. So we also got a few recommendations to secure in the future so that these things are included in the project support and individual projects. Also, we need to really make sure that we have the resources to carry out all the different activities and to follow up really both the programme and project implementation so that we don't generate negative environmental effects during the programme period. And this we take seriously and each project also will be followed on this set of recommendations. Then I will just conclude with a couple of words as tips for you who might be now thinking that this programme sounds quite interesting and you might have a project idea fitting. So a couple of words to little bit repeat what I also said earlier. Always, we want to focus on results. We want to achieve real, concrete, measurable change in the region. So if you have an idea, check that it meets the indicators, the result thinking of the objective that you were considering. That is really important. Then after that, choose the right set of activities, be inspired by our list of joint activities, mix and match so that it best suits your project and helps you reach your goals. We will be working with so-called regular and small projects. More information about this will come during the spring and when we further develop our programme manual and guidance. But small projects will be limited in duration and in size. They will really be, say, one and a half years, 150,000 euros, mainly in the public services development in priority for and really allowing you in a small scale with an easy access to the programme to test ideas and to pilot service solutions. For the regular projects, we will have a two-step selection process and application form. So first, you will get the possibility to test your idea, to test the strategy of it. And then if you are successful and the idea fits the programme, then only we are asking you to fill in the full activity plan and the full budget. We are now looking at most likely the same EIDF rate for all applicants. It would be 80% regardless of which country you come from. In the past, it was different depending on country, but this is, this should now be the solution. And as a relief to I think everyone, we will be working with a lot of so-called simplified cost options, which means that we have defined the budget and the reporting methods on a programme level and you will not have to send in invoices and documentation and explanations about every single cost, but you will get things like lump sums and flat rates to cover your costs. So it will be much easier to implement the programme. And when you are asking, when can I do all of this, when can I apply? Well, you will see question marks, question marks on this slide. So none of this is clear at all. But we are hoping that now that we will, from now on, carry on the public hearing and the SAIR report hearing, we will then collect your feedback. And in May, we hope to have our final document, final content approved by our Joint Programming Committee. And after that, we still need the Commission to approve the regulatory package so that the Member States and the Commission can do the next step. So that is where the question marks actually come in. And depending on when all those big legal processes are carried out, then we will be able to share with you the call timetable, start really in-depth consultations and launch the first call. We, in the most optimistic dreams that I have, we are thinking of launching the first call at the very end of this year, but I might be too optimistic on that, so don't count on that. And then if you want to think about when a project could start, then I think easily the two-step application process does take a year from idea to start. So I think projects realistically will start somewhere in 2023, most likely. But do follow our programme website, sign up for our newsletter, follow our Facebook, Twitter, even Instagram accounts for information. And please, when you've finished this and you hopefully still have a little bit of energy left, the first thing I would ask you to do, go to our website. You will find very visible information on the public hearing. Click on that, you will get the programme document where you will hear, where you will be able to read everything in more detail, what I just told you. in more detail, what I just told you. So what you've had, what you have heard. You will find in written, and then you will find the link to the online survey asking for your feedback on the plan. This is in extremely important feedback because we really want to make a programme that will work for the region and matches the region's needs. So please give us your feedback. And then we will pass it on to to the Joint Programming Committee and finalize the programme based on this. I thank you for your interest in our programme, and I very much hope that you will take the next steps and and you will keep an eye on us and and we will hear from you more in the future. Thank you.